Email from, we're sending emails to all the people out there. You're in, we're taxing them. You're in our taxing business.
Yeah. And the fire departments-
Really?
At our meeting the other day, Rich Ornstein was there. And he was advising us as to what our next steps are, how we need to proceed, you know, to keep up the needed services until time allows, whether we do the KRS 67030, you know, to move the county line and so forth. But, so now everyone's talking on Facebook. Because people are like, "Did I get moved?" You know? And you have to say, you have to go look and see. No, you're good. You know, you're half a mile from the line, you're fine. We've got citizens-
So is Spencerville coming in and they want to take, collect the tax?
No, 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 it's not that at all. The meeting that, Jim, you see a meeting, it was at the same meeting. The meeting we were at with all the Shelby County folks, Shelby County judge, every one-
Shelby County's law is taking the taxes-
The taxes are moved, they're going to collect the money, but we need to be compensated for the services-
Right, the services. Because they don't want to provide the services.
Yes, yes. And they never said they would. And I took away that, and Cory, did we all go to the same meeting? I took away that we was going to work together and I took away that each one of the fire districts EMS and sheriff's offices would all have a mutual aid agreement that they already had, some of it verbally, some of it- and they won't put it in on paper legally, a description on what each one's going to do. So that's how I took away.
Well, that was my takeaway and-
And they all agreed to do that.
Everyone agreed to do it and-
Now you have 30 days.
And now I got that letter because I sent that EMS agreement that we have now for 2021 and 2022, just out as an example. You know, I sent it to my animal control officer. And I said, "You need to get with your," and me and her talked, "You need to get with your counterpart in Shelby County and draft up something similar to this, you know, that we'll pick up the dog that's there, you don't have to come get it. But that way we can quantify, if she make runs, we can get some funding back." And now I got 30 days.
So when they sent 30 days to do what?
Or all of them will be voided according to the D O G.
The agreements you're talking about?
Yeah.
Are they, are they going to accept the agreements?
We got to change the names because they said it wasn't written properly, they was critiquing. And-
Well, Cory would be able to do that for 30 days.
(laughing)
And we had on the list. We already sent them.
Land was there.
But that was, they were critiquing the 21?
They were critiquing that EMS agreement, that it wasn't totally valid.
That was the one from 21 or 22?
Yeah, yeah. That I just sent as an example of what we could get together. I mean, I thought we, you know, we're all on the same page, we know we got to work it out. Again, we've got a basket of challenges that was just dumped on our desk that we got to beat, you know, sort out and get going and then for D O G to send that. Sorry, you guys.
That's okay.
Is it, are anyone else come tell where?
We was on the way.
We was on the way.
He said he thought it was at 2:30.
Oh, well, we-
We can go ahead and get started though.
Yeah, we got a form.
Yeah, we got a form here. Thank everyone for being here and sorry about that commentary that we just went through. But appreciate you all listening to you guys as our guests today.
Did you pull the commentary? Commentary rant?
With commentary.
Slash rant?
It's all right.
You're good.
So, all right, but we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order in Madam Park if you would, call her over please.
Squire Stumpf, Squire Ferris-
There.
Squire Eldridge, Judge Travis-
Here.
Squire Travis-
Here.
Squire Cotton.
Here. All right, thank you. We have a quorum present. Jim, if you would-
Both of the accused, Squire Stumpf.
Okay, in a second. And, okay, have a motion to excuse Squire Stumpf in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And I'll do a motion to excuse Squire Eldridge. Of course, either can attend.
Well, I think he's on his way.
All right, so y'all good with that? General consent, we'll move forward?
Yes.
All right, good deal.
Dr. Roger.
All right, Jim, if you would, you, all of us would shorten, we'll load a word of prayer and then we'll do the pledge.
We're so grateful for this day you've given us and we thank you for this beautiful weather and just be with us today as we go through this meeting and open our hearts and open our ears so we can learn and take away some good things from this meeting that will help all the people in this county. Father, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, Adam the crosser, forgiveness of our sins. And it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you only salute my flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. This is a special call meeting, so we have two, four, six things on our agenda, actually just one, two, three that require action or so forth, so. But first is Greater Louisville Inc. And of course, we have a KIP to folks over here and glad you guys all came. So I'll just turn it over to you guys with the tax incentives.
Abby, do you want to introduce GLI, the GLI team?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take care of my slide and then I'll be the button presser for the slideshow here. First off, my name's Abby Fletcher. I am the Director of Economic Development at Great River Lake Meeting. And so what our main purpose is, we attract businesses to the region. And so our region includes Spencer County, but it's 10 counties in Kentucky, five in Southern Indiana. And so we try to attract businesses to land in our region and also expand if they're already here in Hilton State here as well. We also convene the Greater Louisville Partnership. And so what we do is we work with our regional partners and help talk through what projects are in our pipeline, who's looking at what counties and kind of make sure that we have all the information and provide site selectors when they make that ultimate decision for a business to be located. But in addition, we hopefully will provide educational experience for you all about tax incentives and opportunities for students to kind of take advantage of those. And kind of as a side note, my dad was a magistrate in Madison County for eight years, so I have a lot of respect for what you all do. We got a lot of phone calls late at night about roads and cattle outs, so I just wanted to say I appreciate being here and happy to host, or to be hosting not at all.
Thank you, Abby, for picking us off. My name is Sierra in Lowndes, I'm a consultant with Cornerstone Strategies. I'm a managing partner in economic development for the firm. And our firm's government relations firm as well as economic development consulting. Clients include everyone from municipalities to corporations. Excited to be here today because I'm from Lerue County originally and I love working with small communities. I work with Lerue County's Industrial Foundation specifically, so get to test out a lot of different programs and see how small communities respond to some of our tax incentives and answer questions. Happy to walk through and teach you some things about tax incentives today, hopefully you haven't heard, so you get a better understanding of what these programs can do and what they cannot do to help your community grow. And the first question that I'd like to start off with is with our tax incentives, typically tax incentives get a bad rep as being a handout from the state government or from a local government. And so a lot of communities and a lot of business owners don't necessarily like to utilize these as tools. I think it's a good idea to reframe the conversation on tax incentives as them being the tool that communities can use to create good relationships of corporate citizens. Because tax incentives really allow you to do things to help further your community goals. They're discretionary programs, so they're really dependent upon state and local governments and how you want to apply them. So for example, Jefferson County Metro Government utilizes a median wage for tax incentives of $23 per hour for any project that they would incentivize. You as a community in Spencer County get to select what would be your criteria of what types of jobs you want to attract to the community, where you want them to be, what type of benefits you want them to have. And really memorialize your community values when you incentivize a project and you work with the company to help meet that tax incentive for them. And these are a few of the different tax incentives that are in Kentucky. And it's really, they have, you know, the government acronym names, but it's really best to think about them as a couple of different buckets of tax. The most common tax incentive that we see for companies to take advantage of across Kentucky is health attract projects, or what we call a payroll-based tax incentive. So it's the idea that I'm creating a new job and as a reward for creating that new job, from the company's perspective, I need to retain that employee's payroll tax that they would pay into the local or into the state government. The other bucket of money is a sales tax rebate program that we have in Kentucky on sales tax on construction materials. And again, the idea behind this particular tax bucket is to really make sure that we're encouraging construction and sticky projects, I mean, projects with high capital investment. We don't want to attract projects that are going to pick up and move. We really want to attract, again, projects that are going to be good corporate citizens and have a good relationship with the communities that they're moving into. The corporate income tax is another way that you can typically take a tax incentive in Kentucky. We don't see this in a super prevalent across the state. Typically, companies that are coming in are looking for these payroll-based tax incentives and we want to structure them that way because it allows the company to have more flexibility and to really keep that money in the community and deploy it locally. And then a couple of other tax buckets that are possible, but every community does not utilize, are the insurance tax premium. And we'll talk about this in the future because that's one of the few taxes you can implement as a community to help fund economic development projects. And I have some photos of the Owensboro Riverfront Development, which is what, how that program was funded, that economic development project was funded. And then the final tax bucket that we really want to look at, and this is what is most useful for local governments, because it's really where the majority of your tax base is, is the property tax. And whether or not we can give a property tax abatement or we can give a property tax moratorium to help facilitate growth. And you see this a couple of different ways across Kentucky. Some communities would utilize it to help support historic buildings and to provide a property tax moratorium to encourage people to invest in historic buildings. Or you'll see it in a way that is manufacturing-based or it supports tourism. Again, it is dependent on what you think of your local community values and how you want to express those. And that's true for all these tax incentives. Again, tax incentives are discretionary, up to a certain extent, again, based off of the local and state governments' values. And this is one of the major misconceptions that I see from a lot of fiscal courts and a lot of local elected officials when I go to talk about tax incentives. Again, these are not handouts from local governments, they are a reward for you creating jobs and investing in the community. And all of Kentucky's tax incentives are performance pays, which means that they aren't pulling anything from your existing baseline budget. But any project impact or project growth is going to create additional economic impact for your community. And this is truly the concept behind every tax incentive in Kentucky's arsenal of tools. It said, "The project is going to have, you'll have a baseline county income and then when that project moves into the community, there will be some sort of economic growth, which is that top line and that growth that's shown there." That idea again is that we only incentivize projects that have economic multipliers that are sticky for the communities and are actually going to drive real benefit instead of incentivizing a McDonald's or a Hardee's or something that's a retail operation. And when the tax incentive is put in place, we might decide to look at the tax incentive for 10 years, 20 years. Again, discretionary on your community values and what you're trying to achieve, but the value of that tax incentive, which is the blue triangle that's shown on this budgetary impact, is over just that 10 year, that timeline period you decide. And then the community receives the tax benefit after that timeline, that period, that term is reached. And as you can see from a very simple state view of this, there's a pretty significant benefit for incentivizing that growth well into the future for the community. And then you're supporting something in the early years when companies and projects really need this support with the intention that they're going to be long-term residents of your community.
When Sierra was explaining it to me, something that really made sense in my head is it's not taking a piece of the pie away, it's just growing the pie. And I thought that that was a really good analogy.
And when we're talking about any tax incentive in Kentucky, if we're talking about TIPS, we're talking about industrial revenue bond, any of these fancy words, they are truly based on this idea that the existing property tax valuation is the baseline and we are not taking away from that baseline revenue for any of our communities. We measure the impact and we ask for the tax incentive based off of that future impact to the community. And this is where I like to talk about a basic tax incentive example to figure out, you know, how would we want to layer in specific tax incentives for a community? Again, because there are different values that your community may have and not every community wants to include tax incentives in the same way. So the example for this is that we have a manufacturer that wants to put a new location into a community. And this is pretty typical for projects we see across Kentucky, that a project will bring 40 employees and they're going to have at least a million dollars in investment in equipment and in their, in their purchase of their building or retrofit in an existing building. And so this is where I like to ask fiscal courts, is what type of, and this is participation from you also getting ready, what type of incentives would the community like to offer? You know, is this something that you would want to look at a payroll incentive, a sales tax or a property tax to help support a project like that moving into the community? And again, this is theoretical, but this is something, you know, you have, this is an example from Lerue County. We have two national parks and so we don't necessarily want to incentivize brick houses to go in because the national parks are concerned about the impact of brick houses on tourism. So that would be something that we may not look at a property tax abatement for because it doesn't fit the value of our fiscal court. So this is a great opportunity to start thinking about that. Happy to, if anyone wants to raise their hand, understand not wanting to go on the record for it.
No, I have, I have questions and we're here to ask questions and, and I'm glad that Stephanie here, she's a tax administrator, collects the occupational tax and so forth. But, you know, part of our budget, the big numbers in our budget are the property taxes, the occupational tax and the insurance premium tax.
Right.
That's like, we have a 12, 12, 13 million dollar budget and those three combined is something north of $3 million. So that's a fourth of our budget are those three that we control.
Right.
You know, that we have, that we can adjust. So do we need to like, is that a good starting point, is to focus on the three that we know-
Yeah. And so those are the three that I always recommend communities look at. A lot of times rural communities in particular don't have an occupational tax. And this is where in the state programs it gets a little bit more complicated because it does not allow you to unlock the state money unless you have local participation. So Kentucky's tax incentives are local participation first followed by state participation. So your occupational tax counts as your participation in that program for the payroll-based tax incentive, so that it unlocks the state occupational portion to help incentivize a project. With the school portion of it, with the property tax portion of it, you have to make the schools whole instead of statute in Kentucky. So it would only be the local portion that is abated or the state portion that you could abate through that.
Yeah, our portion.
Yeah. You can start to play into things. However, you can always recommend a project for PIA, which is a sales tax on construction materials and essentially play economic developer and encourage companies to do that with a state dollar. So that's the one that you can really have a lot of influence on without putting any skin in the game for that one as well.
I think that answered her question on what this slot here represents. Basically, we have stood in the court to figure out what we want, what kind of basically we want to draw in.
Yeah, and that's why-
And that basically what this incentive, what it is effectively is, what do we want to draw in, what we don't want to draw in, what we want to give in the incentive back in, what we want to give in the incentive back.
Yeah. And I think that's true. And I think that that's something that's important to sign before projects are even looking at your community, because otherwise you get into the mindset of, hey, you're incentivizing one project and not incentivizing another. Whereas if you have this discussion prior to projects looking at your community, you can apply equal policy towards them. And I just really try to make an effort to encourage communities to do that sooner rather than later. So, and show, you know, if this is something that you would like bringing into your community and you have a local option for a payroll incentive, and I sit on both sides of the table for this, but I always try to recommend that communities try to give away less of their tax dollars if they can. I'm going to push for it opposite when I'm representing a client. But my recommendation from a community perspective is that you start with just the payroll tax incentive for a project like this and see if that's going to help satisfy their gap in their, their early stages of their company. And if there is an additional financial gap that you need to start throwing in some money to win the project from another community or another state, then you start to look at some of the property tax exemptions. Because I think that that's the smartest level of maybe doing these tax incentives from a community perspective.
I have a question.
Okay.
If you should discuss this. Oh, that's mine. I've never done the TIP before, so I am not familiar at all with how they work. I loosely understand, this is where, you can correct me if I'm wrong, right now our rate is 8/10.
Right.
Well, we can tell the company that they're going to charge their employees 1.8%, we give them back 1%, but we maintain our 1.8%. Is that correct?
So you don't necessarily have to do that through a TIP. You can do that by creating a local, specific taxing district. And their company, J Town actually did a great example of this, and they implemented a local occupational tax. They pretty much always just abate it or operate as an additional tax incentive that's a local-based tax incentive. Or you can count as your local participation for the payroll-based tax incentive. So that, if you're putting an occupational tax on a specific site, that can count, in Lerue County, it is a nationalized uniform. So we don't have an occupational, we didn't have an occupational tax that would satisfy the qualifications to unlock the state, so we implemented an occupational tax just for that site for the 10 years it would be under that incentive program to then unlock the state portion because the state portion was so much more valuable for the company. So that, I think, would get you to that point that if you wanted to layer in a specific occupational tax to attract the company, you could do that through KBI, through the payroll, you wouldn't have to go through TIP for that. Let's go to the, this is an example of manufacturers in Kentucky, so I can show you how, just how discretionary these tax incentives are. And I apologize for this being a little bit blurry, I did pull it off the state website for this. And this is essentially manufacturers that have 40 jobs and roughly a million dollars in investment in the local area over a three to five year period. And as you can see, I typically gauge jobs as incentive amount per job and what is a good incentive, what, you know, we negotiated well for clients. The incentives can go anywhere from about $7,500 per job all the way up to almost $30,000 per job. And the two highlighted are actually my clients. So I wanted to show the difference between if the company goes in without a consultant, if they go in without a community really supporting them, those amounts can get fairly, have a fairly large delta on them for these tax incentives. And when this tax incentive is authorized, and the maximum tax incentive authorized, if we look at Circus Hill, which is the first highlighted one there, is $1.3 million. And that's done over 10 years. That's not something that gets unlocked in the first year and that company has to create those jobs before they can start to pull down value. So if I, as a company, come in and I said I'm going to create 40 jobs and I create 10, I can't unlock that full value of that money. I have to unlock only what I generate from a tax perspective, from an occupational tax. So that's all I can pull down. I can't pull down any more value than what I create for that community. Kentucky's a little different than other states on that, but that's again, an important concept because you're not taking money out of an existing budget. You are truly only recapping tax value that you created for that community as a result of that project. And then this is three important considerations I like to talk about in the tax incentive conversation. We always want to make our school systems whole in giving out a tax incentive. Workforce development is really important to supporting economic development. We don't want to be in a situation where we can't build the workers that we need to help fill these projects. And then Kentucky does not have a sales tax exemption certificate that can be passed down to projects the way that other states have sales tax exemptions that can be passed down to projects. So we can only rebate the sales tax generated from the project, we can't offer them that certificate upfront the way that you would see states like Missouri or Ohio. I'm very passionate about agriculture industries, why we don't have a lot of food processors in Kentucky and heavy industrial manufacturing that's especially food manufacturing, is because a state like Missouri on a $700 million project is going to give them a sales tax exemption certificate upfront and not make them walk through all the hoops to get that rebated on the back end. And then the third main concept is that local participation comes to support state participation. So you all are in control of this conversation. It's not going to be a conversation that the state forces a project to locate in your community. You are truly here to make sure that you're driving what you want for the community, that you're advocating for what you want to start to unlock those state dollars to support the And then this is just a rough incentive timeline. CEPHA, which is the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Meeting, meets once a month and every project must have CEPHA approval before it is announced. And Kentucky, so Kentucky has what's called a BUT4 clause in its KRS statutes for tax incentives, so BUT4 these tax incentives, the project would not move court. So if there's a press release about a project, it invalidates the project as part of the state tax incentive process. And that has some implications for fiscal courts because that means that some of these projects need to be taken to an executive session, they need to be discussed off the record, they need to not show up in the newspaper and when we're approving these early stages of tax incentives, just to make sure that we're protecting that project and we're getting it to the CEPHA meeting at the state level. And then they can be announced and after that CEPHA meeting. The projects go through with some preliminary approval, which means that the company has a rough idea of what they want to do in the community. Then they have to go through final approval, which means they really finalize what they want to do in the community, who have a good idea of the economic impacts, it's not a bait and switch situation, everyone's got, is on board with this idea before it actually gets activated. And then the activation point is when they start to pull down the tax incentive value. So we've created the jobs, we've put investment in the community, we now may want to go look at our local participation from an occupational tax, start working with that to get that pulled down. Most of the time with that, the occupational tax gets maxed out at the state level before they even come down to the local. We're always going to choose to max out that 3% at the state level before we start to ask for that to be moved over from the local tax accounts essentially. At least that's my preference as a consultant when I'm doing the compliance or my clients on this.
Sierra, could you talk about how long each of these steps, it takes to go through them? Like how long is the preliminary and the final activation?
Preliminary approval generally moves pretty quickly because we want to get to the press release and when we can talk about those. And that takes usually 30 days once we bring it to, anywhere from six months to 30 days when we bring it to a community before we take it to CEPHA. Final approval can take anywhere up to three years after preliminary approval. And that's something that is often hard for communities to walk through, particularly as elected officials, is, you know, you get really excited about a project, you announce a project, you know, it might be three to five years before we actually see jobs and the building being built for some of these larger projects. And so it's tough and again, I'm from Lerue County, we have Blue Oval and a large impact from Blue Oval, you know, it's tough to wait to see these economic impacts and to understand that this is coming down the pipeline. So we did, at the maximum, can be anywhere from up to six years probably before, from the time that we go to preliminary approval for an economic development project till there's actually a ribbon cutting and stuff is coming off of the production line. So that's a long time, again, as an elected official, to have a project kind of looming over where people are asking you questions about when you're going to be able to get a job at that particular plant. But it is something that's really important in the economic development process because that means that we get projects right and that we're prepared to build workforce programming around them. We may have the new fire stations and the right roads that go in and we can build some of those other support things from a community to make sure it's successful. And this is just a break for questions. I have a whole other section on R and Bs and tips, which I know Cory has seen.
I do, it's just that I need to see your next section. You know, I've received the RFPs from GLI online that have the code name, project summary, that it talks about the investment in community, it talks about the jobs that it's going to create. But, you know, I see these and I see how much land they're wanting, 400 to 800 acres, you know, things like that. So I think we've had a lot of discussion about developing land and coming up with land that is available, you know, farmers that potentially sell versus ones that over their dead body will they let that farm go.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that that's kind of a big hangup for us right now, is just having that land and then also having all of this in place so that when something like that comes through, we can reach out to them. Now, do you recommend that I reach out to you? If I see something that I feel like, okay, this would maybe work, should that conversation start with you all or should that conversation start with the court?
If it's, if you have site control or you know that it's going to be listed, then I would say it's okay to go ahead and submit it to a GLI proposal. But if it's just an idea you have and you don't have site control and it's not been listed with an industrial commercial broker, then I would start with your fiscal court to have those conversations. Because the difference is that we, and I'm very partisan about the land to preserve agriculture land, very passionate about it, but I also really think that growth is coming to Kentucky and we need to prepare for it. So having an idea of what you want to start getting zone is industrial and what you want to get site control over is really- want to get site control over is really important. And this was a, Lurie County had asked me to come back to their economic developers sometime in early 2021, '22. And I told them I wouldn't work with them until they had an option on a site because of this particular reason. I didn't want to be in the position of wanting to market the community but not have site control and not have sites that were available and had already been discussed with fiscal court and been zoned appropriately before we entered into this conversation with them.
And Brittany, kind of on that, we're happy to talk through, maybe because of the site, figure out, you know, how, what does it need? So usually these projects, the most important things are electric and water. And so even if you have the space, you need to make sure that if you can get water out there and electric out there, you can kind of talk through that and where to figure out if something's viable.
Right. And there's some great resources that are available from a grant perspective, from LGD, BYU, the Kentucky PDI Program, which I know you've been really interested in advocating for for Spencer County. Those are some great grant-based programs that can help with that site development. Yeah. Okay, let's go to the fancy tax incentives now.
I wrote down some challenges. And I was in, Gary Taft, he was our state representative, and then he became state senator and retired. And I was in his office in Frankfort probably 20 years ago. And he pointed out that Spencer County doesn't have any interstates. And I agree with him because we don't and we still don't. And we do have a four-lane highway up here, it's a state road, but we don't have any interstate. We only have three miles of federal highway, US Highway, US 15031E is the only federal highway we have in the county. And then everyone says, well, but you don't have natural gas either.
Yeah.
Now, there's, there are pipelines, how you tap them, I'm not sure. But if you come into town, I mean, we, what I'm saying is we have some challenges that Lurie County doesn't have, Harden County doesn't have, Shreve County doesn't have.
Lurie County is really fortunate. But I would also push back and say Marion County didn't have those when they were recruiting the two other subsidiaries. Taylor County didn't have one when they were recruiting their early Amazon locations. And so, yeah, I mean, that's true, but those aren't here. But in some cases, if you're working well and you're getting your site under control and you're able to offer it, that means a lot more than there being a highway in place as long as there's a plan to make sure that transportation matches what is the requirement for that. Yeah. I mean, those are two great examples of counties that did have interstate and have really, you know, Brooklyn is doing a great job as an economic developer over in Marion County. For, I mean, they've really done a great job for what resources they have there. So these are what I like to consider the fancy tax incentives because they're the ones that the county attorney doesn't easily like to deal with. And there are three of those that I consider, like I said, the fancier ones, which are industrial revenue bond, a tax increment financing, and an insurance premium tax. And we'll go ahead and talk about, I think, TIP is the first one that's up. And TIP is what is considered a hot button issue in Kentucky economic development. A lot of people across the state get really nervous when you bring up that acronym, TIP. And it is a complicated program. Kentucky's TIP laws are very restrictive and we've had some bad examples of how TIPS have gone poorly and some examples of how they've gone really great for the state. A TIP is a tax increment financing bundle that is specifically designed to help support public infrastructure. And it should be used to jumpstart development. And it's really important that it is viewed in that concept that it should jumpstart development because these can pool tax revenue that you would maybe want to give to another project in the future. And you can include things in these TIP districts that would potentially hinder future economic development or give you more flexibility to track. So they're, they are kind of an interesting structure. I'll go to the next one. This is a really famous example of a TIP in Kentucky at Center Point in Lexington. And the idea, again, behind this TIP is that it should, it should restart downtown development. It took an area that was frankly unsafe in Fayette County and created a new development plan that then was supported through tax incentives. And that tax incentive was specifically used to create parking and the parking infrastructure because Fayette County did not have an underground parking garage. I mean, the TIP funds went to support that parking garage, again, the public infrastructure associated with the site so that it would spur development around that area. Another really good example of this is the Arena District in Louisville. So the Arena TIP district covers more than just the site of the Yum Arena. And again, that means that there are implications for businesses that would locate around the area with the idea that it would clean up a specific area or it would build public infrastructure to help support development in that area is somehow more important than the backend businesses that they would attract. Let's compare this to an industrial revenue bond, which is my favorite tax incentive and that's not Corey's. Industrial revenue bonds are much more flexible and generally use the same bucket of tax money that TIPS do. The difference with an industrial revenue bond is that they can act as a longer-term property tax abatement instead of front-loading the tax on the front end to help support a significant public infrastructure investment. This has some interesting implications for affordable housing. And I'm actually looking at this for a couple of affordable housing projects in Louisville right now because it helps stabilize the models for affordable housing to get better multifamily housing into communities because it does act as a long-term property tax abatement. So you can go up to 40 years on property tax abatement with a TIP, with an IRB in Kentucky. And these are done as leaseback structures, which is where I'm sure Corey is a little concerned about them. But the idea is that they become a municipal project so they come out, come off of your local tax rolls for whatever term you are writing the IRB for. With that, we negotiate what's called a pilot. It's a payment in lieu of tax from the project to the local fiscal court, into the local community, or to the state government, depending on what bucket of money we're abating through an industrial revenue bond. And that money can be used in a lot of different ways for the community. It does not have to go back into the general fund for the community. So there's some interesting, really interesting implications behind this. One of the great examples of this is that Jim Beam did this for the project in Bullitt County where they wrote an IRB for the project to help support it. And because, again, in Kentucky, you have to make the educational system whole, we have to give that school portion of the property tax to the school. The pilot allows them to determine what that goes to. So they dedicated all of their property tax and the pilot payment for the school, the educational portion, to early childhood education and creating a specific early childhood education center within the Bullitt County school system. And it's actually labeled as the Jim Beam Early Childhood Education Center. So there's a lot of flexibility for local governments to use these. And there's a lot of different things that they can be used for. So it is something that if you said, for example, we're willing to abate 100% of your property tax for a local basis, but we want, you know, 20% of it to go to a specific project within the community, or we want it to go to upkeep along the streets, or, there are some different options that you can view as a local government to help support specific initiatives for your community through these. And again, they're not, they're not perfect, but they do have a lot of flexibility and it's the best tool that we have as the economic developer that has that much flexibility to help support projects and help support local initiatives. And this is a great example, again, in Lexington. Sorry, this presentation is a little Lexington-heavy today. But this is the distillery district in Lexington where they took an IRB over the entire parcel of these properties. And they really utilized it in a way that would make it more vibrant and support the, again, the stabilization of that property tax for the future. And insurance premium taxes are less commonly used for economic development projects, but this is just a great example of where they can be used to support a community initiative. Owensboro funded their riverfront redevelopment and all their park system with their insurance premium tax. And this is honestly the best example in Kentucky that shows that this can, can pay off for a community, have larger benefits outside of just collecting that tax. Not the most efficient or easiest way to go about funding a project, but certainly a good way to do it. And they did it in a way that really drove future value for their community. And then, any questions? Do you have? I know that this is a lot of very technical information today, but I did want to make sure that we were covering a lot of different programs, different tools that you can utilize. Just as a perspective of having worked in multiple states and multiple markets, Kentucky does not utilize all the tools in their tool chest the way that they can for economic development projects. And so I think the more that we can talk about these tools and the more we can get familiarity with all of our local elected officials, hopefully we can keep using them more efficiently into the future.
We rely pretty heavily on KEPA. And if anyone has a question about anything, I call them. So if you all have something that you have a question about, you'd like certification on these, someone can perhaps take, speak up.
Was the insurance premium tax for Owensboro, was that a long-term plan or was it like two years or collect this money?
I think that they originally set it over 10 years and they were able to stop it after stings.
Okay.
Because I think it went a lot more efficiently. And this is a little, predates my professional career a little bit to have an idea of it. Most of that work was done when I was finishing up high school and through college. And so they've, I mean, they've worked pretty efficiently on that.
For a small project that's not like an arena site or downtown Elletboro, what would you suggest would be their best course of action?
To put that in, and I'll make sure we might fix the app for any recordings, but for a project for an IRB, I typically don't recommend them for clients unless they're doing at least a $50 million project. A TIP really needs to be between that $50 and $100 million project. And anything that is under $50 million is probably best for a property tax moratorium or some other tool that's helping the developer from that perspective. From a community side, if you can get to a TIP, $50 million per TIP, that's about the point you need to make actual significant infrastructure improvements for things. So if you need a downtown parking garage, if you need some really like nice park infrastructure, if you need new street state designs, then yeah, that, that starts to make sense. But I would say it needs, again, it has to spur development. And this is, in a lot of ways, what is the current trouble with the West End TIP in Louisville is that there wasn't a development in place prior to granting the TIP that would spur that, again, that's all based off this, I'm creating a new tax increment. So something has to create that increment. So if there's not anything to create that increment, it's going to be better to start looking at like grant programs like KPDI, you know, and some of those to help get to the point where you can then get someone attracted to be that, that driver for it.
So for the tax incentives, are those like tools that are already in the toolbox that anyone can use? Or do you have to like, you know, pass something to authorize to start off?
All of them are already written into KRS statutes. And there are a few of those listed. I can go back and clean up the property tax ones where the property tax abatement and moratorium are on that chart that's in the presentation. But those are already written into KRS statutes. So they're available for every community across Kentucky. There are some provisions that, again, some communities don't have local occupational tax to unlock the state occupational tax, but for the most part, those are.
And so you already have authorization to start like working through like KEPA and stuff like that?
Yeah.
And then my other question is about like economic development authorities. What relationship do they have? Like when you like create an economic development authority, like where do they play a role in operating incentives?
Yeah. So it depends on if they have bonding capabilities or not is really the answer to that question. So if, for example, even though there's no funds exchange for an industrial revenue bond to do a property tax abatement, I still have to have the capability of being a municipal bonding authority to be able to pass that. So it has to be a city. It could be Riverport in Louisville. It could be, you know, county-level government. So those are all able to do those. The Lurie County Industrial Foundation doesn't have bonding authority, so it could not. Some of the, again, Riverport and Louisville is a great example of it not, is a quasi-government agency that has that already built in.
My biggest question, I guess, would be what do you recommend, you know, like ours is targeted, get a hold of these tools incentivized to have spurring this part growth? Or are they, if you've got a state park, it's economic here, they've been trying, they've been trying for 30 years.
Yeah, I think getting some sort of site under control, even if you don't own it, that you have the option to market it and the option to move it forward to some of these proposals is really important. Again, we're, I'm working with Lurie County's Industrial Foundation on this specific issue because we did have an industrial park. We had sold out our industrial park in the late 90s, so we needed to acquire new land. We did have the infrastructure to it, so we started with the KPDI program to get infrastructure to it. We are having a SEER that's being put in and it'll be in either August or September or supposed to be in in July. But now that we have that ready and the site, the utilities to the site, we're now having conversations that, do we want to list that with an industrial broker? Do we want to list that with a different commercial broker? You know, what does that look like for us? Do we want, you know, who do we want to be on the side? What's our ideal income, you know, our ideal wage threshold, what's going to hurt the county? You know, we don't want to poach from other businesses in the county, but those conversations need to take place now. And as you're getting land either zoned or you're getting an option for it, then you can start saying, we want to start attracting some of these businesses to it.
If we were to work with a private developer, how would that work out?
So it can work a few different ways. It can work that the developer is purchasing a site from a private landowner and then is coming to you with a development plan to help. And there are also some thoughts about, you know, you can recruit, you can do recruits and developers, you can show them some different things. If you want up a toll, that's maybe something different from, you know, if I want industrial. And so those are your options. Again, once you have site control or you have an option or you have at least permission from a landowner, in Kentucky, you have to be a broker to really market a property. But you can, there's some things as an economic developer, you can help connect the dots between landowners and potential developers that are friendlier for it. So I think for those, I would go through and think about what your community wants. So if it's a hotel, like spend more time talking to hotel developers. Look at sites that, you know, match your tourism outcome. If it's something that you want more industrial and you want to have marketed as an industrial site, think about, start thinking about those things now. The worst thing to happen, and I love Bullitt County, but I'm a pick 'em Bullitt County a little bit, you don't want to be Bullitt County and just let growth happen to you and not be planning for it.
And to speak to that a little bit, we've had several conversations with KEPA and with the economic development cabinet about the KPDI.
Right.
And obviously, there are a lot of restrictions and funding thresholds that you have to meet for that, and it's industrial.
Right.
But that would, they would, that might be used to purchase land, maybe in making it industrial, but then it has to be that. You know, I know we're working very hard on our distillery regulations. I feel like people, you know, they would like to see us tie into that.
Distilleries are industrial in Kentucky. So I mean, there's something, you know, there, that's a great example of something that is truly industrial, that fits a meterism. And so if it is something you want to start looking at attracting a distillery, again, there's a huge need in Kentucky for larger-scale distillery operations or even white labels, not even ones that are branded. So those fit nicely to the concept of industrial for KPDI. Specifically, I work for the Gustaf Distilling in Bracken County, and they use a PDI grant to get water to that facility, even though it's very tourism-focused, but that was something that was utilized for that. The program is restricted and it is truly designed for commercialization and how do we get properties ready for commercialization? And I think that that, it's tough because you don't want to, there's a lot of optics around that as a community and as a fiscal court in trying to get a property acquired and people start tracking up prices when they hear that you're doing this or you're thinking about this. So it is something that does require some sensitivity, but it is something to think about how do we plan for because, and I, I think Bullitt County is a great example of this because they're doing a great job now with their planning and their economic development that for several years, their planning and zoning was not prepared to help effectively zone and think about where industrial went into the community versus where community assets like retail and tourism went. And they're having to combat a lot of the results of that now.
We're going to have a challenge with industrial here.
Yeah.
Well, you kept saying, I already got questions. Like you're saying theoretically, the county had 200 acres right now and started talking to someone that put some sort of big industry up there. How does that work? Because we're not really in the business of developing land.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as, you know, legal-wise, if someone approaches or we found somebody we wanted to work with, I mean, are we just selling the property with some sort of plan? How does that work?
Yeah, it can go a couple of different ways. We have put our land in Lurie County into our industrial foundation, which, again, our judge executive sits on the board of, our mayor, Hodgill, sits on the board of. And so it's a quasi-government agency in which we own the land there and that entity is responsible for developing it. We moved money from fiscal court to fund that purchase. We moved money from fiscal court to fund that purchase, that piece of property. We have not decided as an industrial foundation if we want to retain ownership of that and be a developer, which is what Barron County has done for their industrial park. So Barron County has said, I want to retain ownership of that land. I'm going to recruit a construction company like Kelly Construction to come in and build an industrial spec building on that. And then as an industrial foundation, they receive the leaseback value of that to continue to fund other economic development projects.
That answers your question perfectly. So we can keep ownership of it, put it in something, we got a hundred warehouses somewhere and lease money goes into.
Warren County does that too with Bowling Green, with their Chamber of Commerce. They use, they have a specific fiscal entity within their Chamber of Commerce to do that. And it's in a mix. So Bowling Green has sold some buildings, they've sold some land, but they've also retained ownership of a lot of it to keep funding their additional economic development efforts.
Can fiscal court use these incentives to buy land? Just say we want 25 acres out here for this reason down the road.
It would be, you would have to walk through some legal loopholes for it in Kentucky because you can't be the grantee and the recipient of some of the tax incentives. And because, again, local participation has to unlock state and you have to effectively be the grantee of it. So you would need a separate entity to be the recipient of it. And I'll, again, go back to this Lurie County example for the sewer that we are putting in place. The fiscal court is actually the grantee of, or the recipient of the KPDI funds for it because the fiscal court is providing the match for it. So we had to run it through the city of Hodginsville to be the grantor of the money, even though it was coming from the state. So yes, you could use it, some of these, you could use something like a TIF, you could use something like an industrial revenue bond to help support a purchase, but you would really have to have a separate entity that's set up to be the recipient of that tax benefit.
So my next question here, in terms of how we do all of that, our planning and zoning commission has their own attorney. Obviously we have our county attorney who splits his duties between what we do here and just regular criminal prosecutions, things like that. If we had an economic development authority or if we had an industrial authority, whatever, would we need to have separate legal counsel for that?
Our county attorney does our legal work for Lurie County, but I can understand there needing to be separate legal representation. I think that there's, you'd have to just think through, I don't know that it's required. I mean, I think it is a good proprietary, it's a good idea to have separate legal counsels for each entity. I think it makes it a lot cleaner for future reference.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're doing things, A, the first way we're not killing our county attorneys with all of the progress we're trying to make.
I agree with you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I feel a little nosy about Lurie County. I think the population of Lurie County is actually less than Springfield. We're 20,000 and you are a little less, aren't you?
Yeah, we're at, I think between 14 and 16,000 right now.
And then, of course, you're GOP candidate for state rep, it's from Spence County.
Yeah, since our county is always at the face after a debate. Once you made it out on Lincoln Trail, you know, it's a tough regional.
But I guess, you know, thinking about the Blue Oval plant, I know it's way closer to you guys than us. But as far as the economic activity examples, you know, y'all got to be short of housing for all these people to live. And I mean, while you were talking, I was trying to think of things we have that'll give us an advantage. And looking at this one paper you had where it has the wages, you know, 8700 people, you may have heard, heard this, but 8700 people drive away from Springfield County every day to work.
Yeah, and that's the same issue we were running into in Lurie County, our outbound migration. And this seems something too that GLA can help pull the data for you on. Because we have some databases that GLA controls that have outbound migration. And that's what we were running to in Lurie County is that everyone, we aren't raising money from an occupational tax because everyone's leaving the county to work someplace, right? And I mean, I drive into Louisville a lot of days from Lurie County because that's where the business center is. And it's something that we needed to think about as a county. And that's also why we're trying to be really intentional about growth for the county and what types of jobs we want because we know an average wage of most Lurie County residents is much higher outside the county. So it doesn't do us any good to attract jobs that are lower wage than that if we want them to stay there. So there, that is very important in the concept of sustainable economic development. And so, yeah, it's just something that we have to think about. We're constantly thinking, there are two new subdivisions going in in Lurie County and my dad was on planning and zoning for 20 plus years in Lurie County. It's actually where I learned about economic development and got really interested in it. But, you know, that's something that is really hard for the community to think about where we want to put these and whether or not we want them to be annexed into the city so that they have, you know, they have sewer systems attached to them or if they're going to be on septic systems. And we've had to have a lot of those conversations recently. And I can't take credit for them because we have excellent elected officials, excellent mayor and excellent judge executive that are leading those conversations, that they have been very intentional about them for the county.
Shelby County and you guys with KPI may know because Shelby's in our district. But, you know, when we leave here and go to Shelbyville, all those giant warehouses were built. I keep waiting for something to go into them. They're sitting there empty. And that would worry me if I was one of the investors. And I'm guessing that's all private, that some firm made that purchase.
There's several, several ones that work in this area where it's a private company. They build it and you will be surprised, it's probably not vacant.
Really?
It probably just has maybe a few workers parked somewhere else. You can't see.
Yeah, it's mainly just storage, you know.
Yes. I know everyone that was built in Bullet County is completely full.
And so this is also just a trend and it would be worthwhile to have some industrial brokers come down and talk about trends that they're seeing in the market. We have started to see a lot of groups like the Hunt Group, which owns the Kansas City Chiefs, come into the market and they've built several of the ones in Shelby County. But they are now looking at this as a new market for them to build in because they've built in Indianapolis. We have low inventory from an industrial perspective in the state as a whole. So it's a really good market for them to build industrial second as an investment for the future. And so we're starting to see a lot of these big national groups really look at this area where they do.
A lot of great big buildings we've seen in this little rural trend now. We don't shop in person, we shop online. There are facilities for Amazon, you can be in a select store.
There are also facilities for Louisville brands. So I don't want to discount some of that because I think that that's something that we don't see a lot because they don't have branding on the big warehouses. Crossley Brands, which is located in Louisville, is a historic Louisville area company. They make record players, they do a lot of lawn furniture, retro reproductions. They are, they have a big half a million square footer in Shelby County that doesn't have a logo on it. Some of those are being used to help support, you know, some of the distillery projects there. I mean, there's just a lot of different things that get, that go into those buildings that you don't necessarily notice just because they don't have signs on them. I would also recommend if you haven't been inside of those buildings, to take a tour of one of them when they're empty because it is a really unique experience to be able to see.
How much economic activity is Lurie County expecting in the next 10 years of Blue Oval?
It's a tough question to answer, but I mean, we, right now, we're seeing a lot of the construction impacts too. When we talk about economic multipliers from a project, there's different phases. So the construction phase, when you're having all the construction workers that are coming in, need housing, want to save money. You know, their kids need someplace to go to school for two years because Blue Oval had some substantially longer terms for their contracts. That we're fully seeing right now. We're seeing the direct impacts on housing as a result of that. We are fully anticipating that our school system is going to have to have additional support to get to where it needs to go because right now we have partnerships with E-Town, we have partnerships with Hardin County where some of our students are taking classes there because we don't have the, you know, the space to train them and the, you know, shop space that we need. Occupational education is going to be really important for this area for that. Yeah, so, but I mean, we're anticipating quite a bit and our site is 70 acres. So we, you know, anticipate that that could have two separate buildings, one building on it. I mean, there's a lot of possibilities. That's also where our judge executive gets very wonky and is looking at a lot of site plans. I'm more concerned about the jobs going for it.
Lots of things with ideas.
Yeah, and we're happy to be here as a resource. Again, GLA retains me as a consultant to help provide support to communities in the region. And I'm always happy to answer the call, you know, come down here, talk, you know, run through a project, huff on a conference call about different things to figure out how we can help support you.
And Brittany's got our contact information. So if you all have any follow-up questions after this, she can shoot that your way, give me a call, she can email. And generally I've got access to resources that can show you when people are migrating out of the county, wherever they go. We have those types of programs to pull up that information.
It's good for your investment too, for your investment in the regional partnership. So make sure you're using it as much as you can.
Thank you all so much. You don't have anything else? Appreciate you guys coming. I know we got, we got two or three other things we're going to talk about. You all are free to stay or free to go. Yes. What's that? I guess.
If you got to say, I have.
And we'll, again, thank you all for coming and helping us out. Yeah, we're very happy and lucky to have you guys.
We'll get in contact with her.
Okay.
We'll have to worry about it.
Yeah. Thank you all. See you. See you, Dustin, Lisa. Take care. Oh, we got these, there's a lot of stuff to add here. The, we've got mowing, mowing equipment right here. I have a deed. The, I called and got some prices for mowers yesterday. Zach and I had a discussion. He wanted to get put on the agenda today about mowers. Bottom, bottom line, we've got, we've got three tractors, one mower. We got one mower.
Yeah, that's a good, it's a boom mower. It's not even a light mower.
Keith said one of our side mowers, which there's a side mower and a rear side mower. One of them's been waiting on parts for weeks.
They're expecting the parts to come in June 30th.
Another one just broke down last day or two.
Last week.
It was a stump jumper vent. Different, yeah, he just told me today.
I was saying it's one of the mowers.
Yeah, the only other mower was a stump jumper vent. And they're calling to try to get parts and they're going all the way to the factory and they don't know.
The other issue with the other mowers is very important. This mower, it keeps, the weight of it, it's designed by, it's designed to use every once in a while. All around the car, all around edge of the road. It's not designed to be used the way that we're using it. It'll be a break in the vacuum of the tractor. Where I've announced the tractor, I've never, I've been to grab a harmon, the tractors and stuff all my life. I've never seen a bird arm twist and warp like that. It's breaking clean and through. It's several hours and they're kind of crazy. So we have purchased the one mower. I talked to Boo this morning myself and he says, rep, he talked to him and all they're waiting for, the truck that's transporting the mower to him, it should be good by any day, anytime. So hopefully we'll have it on sale or here shortly. I'd like to go on ahead and purchase another mower, the exact same mower I already purchased.
It's actually cheaper.
Yeah.
If you look on this page, that's the same mower that we just bought that we haven't got yet.
We bought the first one for $21.5. This one, if we buy one, we go up and buy one today, we'll be buying it for $19.8. We'll be paying a little bit of money and we'll go and get that thing on the way. Us buying this other mower, like I said, once again, a thousand dollars, which Hollywood's, it's close down with the prices on new tractor, new tractor.
That's just paid.
And a new, new mower to go with it, which is $90 some thousand off the other $100,000.
He's got like a side mower or is this an offset?
It's all set, made in pride, mowing it, $22, $22.95. I mean, y'all make your decision on that. I mean, I like the tractor, but the one we've had up there, we've only got like $2,500, $3,000 an hour going. We kind of want to grow. So the only reason we haven't felt the effects of them is they've been under warranty up till right here.
Jim, I know in the last court, they, y'all looked at, basically having our mowing done by contractors, by a contractor. I don't know how much we spend every year on mowers and tractors, but probably more than we would spend for a contractor.
It's going to be a real big deal.
I think it's going to be more expensive, more of a shock than what you think because I actually, before I took a seat in the White, I see all of them, still imagine a contract, got some ropes out open. It begins, you're not a professional, it's passed on to the, to the individuals and it's, it's exciting. It's just, it's just that's not cool. I get what you're saying and I.
It has other benefits too. I mean, we have, we have problems with employees. So you don't need as many employees. You don't have to do any kind of maintenance. They generally have in their contract that they pick up the trash before they mow certain areas.
Not, it depends on what the, it depends on what the contract, like I was up there doing on the state side. And, yeah, it's been, it's been pretty weird. When I was up there doing it personally, my business was following a big money mile. But in those contracts, there were certain rate changes that I didn't have to get on. So whereas now we have, we can say, call what you call this, we could do and be in their contract and they don't involve certain opportunities of it, you know, related by the rail hole on water. They wouldn't have to do that. A lot of workers, we're going to be coming in their hole and five foot and that's about it. Especially if there are roads, we get out here on the foreland, so we see the state building, yeah, they're holding a lot of that, but you don't fly rail. I mean, I'm willing to look into it, we're willing to look into it and I think it's going to be.
Well, you know, we had talked about, seriously, about setting out, our request for proposal. To do that and have, you have, you got the Schultz, which I think you can talk to.
There's Schultz and there's, what about that?
There's frauds.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, and just, and let them say, this is what we'll do for. And this is what we'll mow and this and that. And then we will know. I mean, we never did do it in the last court, we just did it. I think that's it.
I mean, even if, if we just have a mow percentage and it cuts down on the use of our equipment and the number of people we have to have.
The county's always wanted to have a tractor too with more.
We're going to, yeah.
Just go out and spot mow and all that, you know, that these guys wouldn't if we went that way, so.
We're going to always have a mower. And another thing too is we're always going to have a rail mower. So a sorry advice, like this proposal here, we're going to talk, I put together, I had to put up a code, but I'm not really, I'm not going to have to talk about finding a new tractor. I know we're going to, we're going to have to buy another tractor and rail mower probably next year. I'm not making a new try right now, but we've got a lot of what we got. We've got a lot of tree limbs in the road, we've got a lot of issues with that, we're getting things going. I don't get it, they don't, I see, so. I can see if I was, instead of us spending a $100,000 and buying a tractor and mower, I know that's five. For now, another bush hog, we've got the tractor to pull those good. And I think it's going to take a lot of the wear and tear off of them too, because these tractors, farm tractors are heavy. These aren't really construction tractors, they're not really set up to weigh, they're set up with pumps to run, to run, to feed guilt with rear fat. And the weight of these tractors have been set up with the mowers that we're pulling, they're set up with different pumps and different pressures in front of the tractor in a way it's not supposed to be ran.
Plus the weight.
The weight of the, the weight of these mowers.
You got to counterbalance the weight of that mower with the weight on tractor wheel.
What did the big three say about how long it takes to get this new one? How far? It's been five months.
I don't disagree with you.
That's not really a big three as much as this bush hog, so.
I know that, but still, yes, I'd like to have all the same equipment, but if we can't get a bush hog ran until...
If you look at the rest of the branches of the boats.
Probably John Deere's about a point three thousand dollars.
Now, the John Deere, what I did, see, we bought that last one, we didn't bid. So since we're buying another one, we've got the bids. So I've got three bids. We did get bids the last time, we got two bids, but they were from the same place. We bought the Big Three, and on two different makes. But I've got three different companies, three different makes, and you can kind of see the John Deere, now, the lady from John Deere, and this was on Sourcewell, and the government pricing, but you can see a picture. Now, y'all's pictures, as a made copies, they got worse and worse as far as copy quality. The John Deere mower is available. Now, Jacoby's priced this DSTN-72, and I couldn't find a 1072 on their website, it's, it's the BW-1072. So I'm guessing that's it. But see, it's twenty-five thousand, twenty-four-nine.
Well, the only thing is, I just didn't have all the same equipment, same parts sitting up there.
Yeah, I agree with you.
But in the same sense, we got to wait five months to buy a mower, and there's no deal there, huh?
I agree.
Well, John Deere, I don't know if I'm that either, but has John Deere got one set on there a lot?
She acted like they did, but I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I like to confirm that. These, these, these halfbacks, it's not something you sell every day, so I wondered, I think I've seen a few or over, four, ten foot or over fifteen foot or twelve, that's up on the lot. You ever deal with it?
Shelbyville said they should have them at Chipperfield, and then the lady that called me was from Marion County. But I, I wanted to get three bids for comparison in case we decide we'll have our procurement requirement cut.
And the other thing about which we can go on, if we run, run a one or anything, but the other thing, too, is if we, if we go find another mower now, the other tractor that we're going to have to put it on, it's going to take a minute to get that mower off. It ain't going to be a day job, it'll be a, take a minute to get that off.
Well, basically, we're going to have to take both mowers off.
Well, one mower is just on the back.
Right.
Simple, just.
The other one's just a side mower, ain't it?
The other's a side mower, but they can sit there, get the job, you get that thing off.
But, but the idea is we'd take the side mounts off that are shot, and then just hook to these.
The thing about these is, is, you know, they're, they're, you don't have to buy, you know, a mower every time we run a tractor. If we want to buy tractors, use the buy tractors, wherever we decide to do, and that's what we'll have these.
Yeah, y'all bought one there a nice long time, too.
So, so what are you and Todd are suggesting, just about going for nineteen-eight?
That's what I'm suggesting.
And then, we're going to get it?
I think that's, we should call Big Three and call John Deere, that's what we can do. We can't get it for five months unless we...
Or you want to just wait till our next regular meeting before?
I mean, it's Monday, it's Monday. I'll get some answers for Monday.
Let's do that.
All right, that's, that's this part of the mowing. Keith, we're going through the papers, and we're, we're about to wrap up. The, you see this inquiry here, this ordinance about mowing nuisances of lawns? Basically, you know, we have one example that we're working on out in Saddle Brook, and the process has been taken through, Corey and I discussed it earlier today. And basically, we could get, correct me, of course, I missed any of this up, we could get somebody to mow this yard, and I don't have any bids from anybody, but the plan is to get a, somebody that mows for a living, that has insurance, to give us a bid on this lawn, and we get them to mow it, and then we'll put that, we'll pay them, and then we'll record a lien in the courthouse, follow this process that's in, the ordinance that's in place.
Is that sound good, Corey?
Yeah.
Well, what's the difference in this and what has been in place? Because, I mean, people have been mowing for the county for twenty years.
This is the most recent change, so this is, this is what's been on the books, everything.
Well, I guess the only difference is how we have the handling.
And making sure that proper notes is sent out on this effort.
Jen, Jen, you knew about this for many years, and now you can have actually much, so it's just...
Yeah, it's just, you know, basically, the evacuation procedures, the middle paragraph where it says, "A person designated by the court," and I mean, she's our enforcement officer at planning and zoning, and you go on down through the thirty days that has passed.
Yeah, I was just curious if anything was different on why we hadn't been enforcement because it's been in place for long before we ever got here.
Well, it's, we're, we're ready to start enforcement.
Again.
I think some of that is just complaint files. I know that the garden next to me, it finally got to the point where we complained, and they took them out of pocket. The owners didn't? But the owners of the property didn't? The homeowners that lived around it. Well, but this one here, and I'll, I'll have, it, I don't, it's nothing we got to, I guess, vote on today. I'll bring it up Monday, and hopefully y'all have some bids. But I mean, this lawn is, it has to be an acre, it's in subdivision right out on forty-four, it joins forty-four, so you can just look over and see it. So it's probably an acre, just a little over an acre. And it hasn't been mowed, mowed for two years, plus, plus. So I don't know what a going rate for a yard that bad would be. I'd hate to tackle it for five hundred bucks, especially a weedy, because it needs to cut some bushes down, growing right beside the house. I would think a thousand would be pretty high.
Is the property warfing on, is it, you know?
It's a new, I think someone passed away, and it's, then it's sold. And the previous owners, or not the previous owners, they don't live there, because the previous owner that's away, but the cars in the driveway that might change that I've noticed, so I'm not sure who the occupants are.
Is there something to figure out, a bid or a something like that?
Well, we've already, they've already done that. They've tried to track them down and didn't get a response, but you can post it on their, in the speaker's place on the house, and they've taken care of it, they've done that. So, but basically, I guess the question is, how much do we want to pay? Are you okay? I'll try to have some bids by Monday.
I just give you a couple of bids.
Couple bids, and I'll, I'll inform you Monday.
Well, it really doesn't matter what we pay because we put a lien on a property, and we're going to get it back maybe sometime down the road with probably for a percentage interest also. So, you know, if there's something that we have to do in the county, we just have to fight for it, regardless of what it costs.
So, I mean, it's, I mean, you all can make a motion today, if you want to go up to a dollar amount, or if you just want me to get somebody to mow it.
I just get somebody, maybe ask them what, I look at it.
Oh, yeah. Well, we want to know what we're going to talk, and if it's, you know...
It ain't going to be over what you can spend, so I would say, ask the people in New York, you know, and stuff, ask them, I think, and maybe the court don't feel the same, but...
I mean, it, like I said, I think five hundred would be on the cheap side, but a thousand would be a lot of money.
If you can spend, find someone to mow it, get it mowed.
Yeah. I mean, if y'all want to make some...
Just get, get tractor, you can take a rear mower and no tire.
Right, someone, someone that has a liability policy.
Motion to, I guess, motion to approve the judge's recommendation of moving all the losing yards, I guess, I don't want to work that motion.
Well, what I'd like us to do is, since fiscal court has the ability with this ordinance, we'll do this on a case-by-case basis.
You just want, you just want one of them to say...
Do this one, just this one yard at Saddle Brook.
Motion to approve the mowing of the yard at Saddle Brook, that's been in the West and not in compliance with our ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Zach, seconded by Dan, to approve the judge to get the lawn mowed at Saddle Brook, the one that has been in violation of our ordinance as a nuisance. Any discussion? And again, I'll, I'll report back to everything we do, and let's hope we don't have a lot of these, but we need to tell the community that we, we got to follow it.
In that motion, we need to say that we're going to put...
The ordinance.
We'll put it behind just our motion for...
Yeah, the ordinance takes care of that, I think. All right, thank you. Thanks, Zach. Thanks, Corey. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? Motion passes. We will take care of that. Next is a I of E, opioid training resolution. It should be in the very back of your packet. Basically, last meeting, when we voted to send the SROs, three of those, and two of our sheriff's deputies to this conference, we need a resolution to, I guess, ratify that. We'll need that postponed, Brittany, for the opioid group, that, because, you know, everything we spend on opioid funds has to go through this clearinghouse, basically, agency, to make sure it's proper. And we have, we feel, I feel comfortable that we have vetted that this will, this will qualify. Be disappointed if we get a different answer, but we'll need this resolution, and I entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Hold on.
All right. Motion by Jim, seconded by Will, to approve the resolution to pay for the opioid training for the school resource officers and our two sheriff's deputies out of opioid settlement funds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? Motion passes. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Zach, seconded by Will, to adjourn, meaning available or amenable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? Motion passes. We're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Nice to meet you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. When'd you cut it?
It's, 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 it's clear up.
It's sounding pretty good. The wind is sure dried out.
Yeah, it looks raining a gourd, boy, you got enough humidity. Looks like you found enough fresh grass out there, but...
Don't stack it in the barn.
It's cleared up pretty good.
That's what I'm done going down like, hey, it's all...